We'll call this meeting of the Oceanside City Council to order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
And if you could all please rise with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have one? And if you would please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bailey.
Almighty God, our Father in Heaven, Lord God, we come to you today, Lord God, and give you thanks. We thank you, Lord God, for watching over us and keeping us, Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, for wisdom and for guidance, Lord God. God, we pray your blessings upon the mayor, the deputy mayor, the council members here today, Lord God. Guide their decisions, guide their thoughts, every intention, Lord God. And God, we pray, oh Lord God, that you are, your protection, your love will continually be upon, oh Lord God, all of those, oh Lord God, that are serving this city. God bless this place, oh Lord God, and help us and draw us all closer to you. God, we do love you, and we thank you, Lord God, for loving us, for we pray it and we ask it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, we would have a presentation by North County Transit District.
My name is Damon Blythe. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Service Planning and Bus Operations at NCTD, and I'm here tonight to give you just an update on the activities of NCTD for the, we're going to be doing these quarterly, so if you so desire, one of us will come out once a quarter and give you an update on recent activities and what we're up to. First thing I want to talk about is our five-year budget plan, so we're getting ready to approve our budget in the July, the June Board Meeting, excuse me. We've got some, we feel like some pretty big things that we're reaching for for the next five years. The biggest two are implementing 30-minute peak service frequencies for Coaster and implementing 15-minute frequencies for Sprinter. Coaster, we will probably make that in the five-year plan. The Sprinter, we will make headway on getting to 15-minute headways, but we won't quite make it because there's a length of time that you need to order new equipment and actually construct that double track. Along with those service enhancements, we will be making improvements to the Breeze bus service because Breeze touches every transit center that Coaster and Sprinter stop at. So as we adjust those schedules, we'll be adjusting Breeze as well. And then the last thing is implementing a comprehensive program for first and last-mile services. As you guys are well aware, the first and last mile off of the bus or train is always a challenge, and so we're working with various cities to implement different pilot programs, and I'll be touching on two of those tonight. NCTD is not immune from the ridership declines that have been happening nationwide. We've taken, we're undertaking some studies to take a look at what we can do to reverse that ridership decline. I want to talk about these three real fast. The first one is the Land Use and Transit Integration Study. So that is a study that we're doing in conjunction with all the cities. You guys have participated, and we appreciate that. This is looking at the land use patterns that have been happening in North County and all of our member cities, and figuring out ways that we can help you guys make land use decisions that are transit-friendly, and in addition, looking at the development that has happened and make decisions on where we can adjust transit to better suit the needs of our residents. The next one is the Strategic Multimodal Transit Implementation Plan, so this is going to build upon the land use study. We're going to be kicking that off this summer, and we'll finish that next year. That's basically the second half, so once we've made those studies on land use, we'll take those and make actual service implementation plans on how we can adjust service to better match the land use. And then the last one I want to talk about is the Public Benefit Study. So that's a study that is, we're going to be undertaking, and that will demonstrate specific environmental and economic benefits that come by increasing NCTD services, and we're doing this for a couple of reasons, but mainly it's to get the word out there that, you know, public transit and increasing public transit is necessary, is a good and necessary thing, and here's the economic and environmental benefits that'll come along with it. We're also undertaking some capital projects to increase our ridership. The first and foremost of those is procurement of locomotives and rail cars. So obviously, if I want to increase the amount of times that Coaster runs up and down the coast, I need more equipment to do that. So we've just purchased five locomotives to replace five locomotives that have reached the end of their useful life. My current fleet of locomotives is seven. In order to get to 30-minute frequencies, when you count all the number of spare trains I need, I actually need nine train sets, so I need two more train sets. We've approached Sandag to purchase those two additional locomotives and 10 additional cars for us. That was included as part of the Transnet plan, so the funding for those was already included in there, it's just a matter of actually buying them. We have a contract with a locomotive manufacturer right now, Siemens, so by getting on that early, we reduced the lead time on a locomotive down to like 18 to 24 months as opposed to 36 to 48 months, so we can cut that in half. The next one is the procurement of battery electric buses. Hopefully, in December or January, we're going to be issuing a request for proposals to purchase six battery electric buses. These will be the first electric buses that NCTD has and operates. We're going to be operating those for a period of about two or three years, and then we'll make a decision on what sort of technology we want to go forward with to meet the state mandate of all zero-emission buses by 2040. We have an on-demand ride-share pilot program with the City of Carlsbad and Sandag. That's going to be happening at the Point Setia Coaster Station, so think of this as sort of Uber on steroids. So basically, what we do is we have 12 passenger vans instead of an individual car. They're driven by a professional licensed operator, and they have a dispatch center up in Northern California, and there's an app that you download on your phone, and you can request an on-demand trip from the Carlsbad Point Setia Station that will meet the train and take you to your place of employment in a predefined area in Carlsbad. We believe that this is a, could be a potential replacement for bus service that we have in areas where there's a lot of spread out. It's not very dense, the ridership is very spread out, and it's hard for us to serve with a fixed drop bus, whereas if we can deploy a small fleet of vans, we can get people to where they're going faster without having to have a very circuitous route through the business park. That's going to kick off in probably August or September of this year. And then the last one is the Micro Mobility Project at California State University San Marcos Sprinter Station. I don't have a lot of details about that just yet. We're hoping to engage with CSUSM and the City of San Marcos to deploy either electric bikes or scooters and potentially reduce the first-last-mile program to get from the Sprinter Station into the heart of campus. So one of the other projects that we're working on is developing a signage project, so if you've ridden our service, you know, Coaster was put in in 1995. We've made upgrades to almost every Coaster Station since then. Sandag has put different signs in, we've put different signs in, cities have put different signs in at stations, and so as a result, the stations have a huge mix, mix-up of different sign types, different sign locations. So we're going through, and we're going to be putting in a sort of comprehensive sign package at every location that will not only help passengers navigate the station and help them to determine where they would catch the train or the buses at, but also it's going to help them figure out where they need to go in each city to get to the places where you're helping us identify our points of interest that are accessible from transit. So we're not only doing this at the Coaster Stations, but we're going to be doing this at the Sprinter Stations as well. For those of you who have visited the NCTD website before, you may not have been aware, but we actually had three websites. One was a desktop English site, one was a desktop Spanish site, and one was a mobile site that you could access on your phone. So we had three different websites. You had to update all three websites if you wanted to change anything, and none of them were very user-friendly. So we've just launched a brand-new website focused on helping passengers get to where they want to go and find information about our service. We've also got a great trip planner on there that we've integrated with Google, very easy to use, highly recommend you go check it out. We're in the middle of implementing a new customer relationship management software package, so right now, we have a very basic package that we use to track rider comments, but it doesn't really have any communications tools built into it to help us communicate with customers, so we're sort of revamping that, and we're going to be rolling out a new piece of software that not only helps us track customer comments and complaints better, but also allows us to push information out to the community easier and far more frequently. And then the last one is real-time trip information. So currently, our buses have tracking on them, but that tracking was put in almost 13 years ago, and it only updates every 90 seconds to two minutes, so it's not very frequent, doesn't give you a very good idea of how long the bus, how long your wait's going to be. So we're putting it, putting out for RFP for some vendors to come in and propose something different. We're looking at upgrading that so that not only the Breeze, but also Sprinter and Coaster, you'll be able to track those down to every 10 seconds, and so it'll be almost real-time. You'll be able to watch the bus or train move on the screen towards you in real time. The Next Generation Fair Collection System, so many of you may not be aware, but we share our fair collection system with MTS. MTS just recently awarded a contract to a company called Innit to revamp the fare system. The current one, again, was put in almost 10 years ago. It was a great next-generation system when it was put in, but like all things technology, it's now 10 years old, so it's time to update it. The new one is, instead of all of your information being stored on the card, all of your information is stored in a server, and so it's a lot easier to get to your information when you're on the bus or uploading new passes or new value to your account. So this is just a list of our capital priorities. It's sorted by cost. So the top one up there is supporting right-of-way improvements on the Delmar Bluffs. That's a $72 million package. That goes to reinforcing the bluffs to keep the bluffs up where they are as opposed to washing away into the ocean. The next one down is $56 million for state-of-good repair facilities projects. If we're going to roll out zero-emission buses, I have to put in a charging network. I have to put in some different technologies than I currently have, and we almost have to rebuild our two bus maintenance facilities in order to make all this happen. The next one down is $53 million for the replacement and overhaul of the coach cars and cab cars on Coaster, and also the replacement of 16 cars that have reached the end of their useful life. Another one is $48 million for the replacement of Breeze, Flex, and Lyft buses that have reached the end of their useful life, so that includes CNG buses as well as those six electric buses I was speaking about. The next one down is the locomotives and cab cars for the service expansion on Coaster. Like I said, we've approached Sandag to fund that. Hopefully, none of that will come out of our pocket, but if it does, we'll have to figure it out. The next one down was $15 million for two more locomotives. Remember, I said we have five that we replaced already. We're trying to replace all seven of them right away because the other two are not that far behind on reaching the end of their useful life. $14.8 million to design and construct a new maintenance-of-way building and a general administration building. $12.5 million for the implementation of that new fare revenue system. That's our share. MTS's share is about $25 to $30 million. And then the last one is $2.6 million to replace non-revenue vehicles that have reached the end of their useful life. So we're applying for a lot of grants. Every grant we can get our hand on, we apply for. The Bus and Bus Infrastructure Program and the Low or No-Emission Vehicle Program, we're applying for those to help us on the replacement of the Breeze, Lyft, and Flex buses. The Transit Security Grant Program, we're applying for that to help us with the wayfinding signage project. The Mobility On Demand Sandbox Program, we're applying to that to help us with the last-mile solutions that we're rolling out. The Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements and the Better Utilizing Infrastructure to Leverage Development Grants would be used to further fund those Coaster replacements, and then also the state programs would be used to fund those Coaster replacements. So how can you help us? First of all, advocating for our capital needs. Many of you have conversations with state legislatures and federal legislature. Anytime you go out and talk with those folks, if you can advocate for our capital needs as well as the needs that you're advocating for, it goes a long way. These, the state and the feds like to see that we're cooperating with the cities that we serve, and so it goes a long way to them to see that, you know, we're all working together for the same goal. When we do those grant applications, they often require us to have letters of support, so again, you guys have been a great partner, and in the past, we would just ask that you continue to do so. And then the last one was participating in the Stakeholder and Public Outreach Events for the land use. Again, you guys have been a great partner on that study. We're about to wrap up that study, and we appreciate you guys working with us on it. And that is the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point. I have a copy of a letter for APCD, or, yeah, that's right, and it's something that is a big grant for going towards those two engines, so when Michelle gets back Monday, I'll hand it out. Thank you.
At this point in time, I'd like to invite Pastor Bailey and his congregation, if you will, in recognition of the Shiloh Church of God in Christ and their 55th anniversary.
Well, amen. We have some members that are going to be making their way on down, and a couple of brothers here that's on the side here, if you all would like to come on down with me. But we are Shiloh Church of God in Christ, and we have been in the Oceanside community for 55 years now. On April, amen. On April 23rd, 1964, Pastor Matt Buchanan and Mother Ethel Buchanan founded Shiloh Church of God in Christ. We just celebrated our 55th anniversary, and we have been striving to continue to do what the church was founded upon, which is Matthew 7:12, "Do unto others as you would have do unto you." Amen? And so Shiloh Church does just that. We love our community. We have been instrumental in providing monthly food distribution, speeding thousands of people throughout our Oceanside community. We have also been a part of affordable housing and actually worked hard in pioneering that in the past. We've done many other things for our elderly care. We've been instrumental also with helping the homeless, the needy, the poor, all throughout the community. So Shiloh is a small church with a big God who does big things, and so we're proud to be friends and partners with the City of Oceanside, and we appreciate all of your support and your love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to invite Vice President Frank Culver and Kyle Koger
our department and all the contributions that we make to the city. I'm truly blessed to work with this group of people, and I want to thank personally all 135 of our employees. Some, a lot of them here tonight, a lot of them aren't, though. I want to personally thank all of them for all their hard work and dedication and everything
from the Public Works Department for Public Works Week.
that you do for the city. There's so many people that don't get to see every day what you guys do, guys ain't
Frank, you didn't know you were the Vice President, huh?
girls, you know, working all day, all night, responding to emergencies, working weekends, you know, middle-of-the-night calls for traffic accidents and all the things that you folks do. So I truly feel blessed to work for this department and the city, and again, I want to thank the council for recognizing our department. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm good.
At this time, we'll do our closed session report. Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. The council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss Item 1 on the closed-session agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside City Employees Association and the Oceanside Police Officers Association, non-sworn. There is no reportable action under the Brown Act on Item 1. There's also no meeting on Item 2 on litigation.
Do our consent counter, and Item 7 has been removed from consideration. Councilmember Sanchez.
Excuse me, move approval for ballots. Any public? Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
So we will go to Item 24, which is our third-quarter financial status report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. I'm here tonight to provide you the third quarter as of March 31st financial status report I will provide, as well as budget adjustments and transfers. The, we recommend approval of the third-quarter budget adjustments and transfers. General fund revenues, currently, we're at 64% of the amended budget. This is consistent with the prior year. In fact, I just did a quick analysis. We have about $14 million still coming in in the last month of June alone, so we are on target to not, to meet our budget as listed here. Some of the top revenues, property tax, it represents 41% of our total revenues. It's at 58% of budget. A lot of that funds come in in May and June, mostly in June. We'll book those. Sales tax is actually increasing over the prior year. It's the first time we've seen that in a long time, so we're excited to see that, and with the continued growth, it should even get better. TOT is a little flat right now with the, it's consistent with prior year, but we're not growing the way we had in prior years. Change up in number of rooms, some of that can affect it, but we're watching that as well, but we will expect to meet budget. General fund expenditures, we're at 72%, being that we're three-quarters of the way through the year. We're on track to meet budget or actually be a little less than budget, so ideally, we'd like to spend less and have more revenue come in so that we end up further ahead. My recommendation is that city council approve the third-quarter budget adjustments and transfers, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Any public? Move approval?
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
So we'll go to Item 29, which is items from the public regarding items on not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers?
We have five speakers. First speaker is Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Gina Austin, to be followed by Dennis Martinick.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Nick Ritchie, 133 Sherre Lane. As the sand replenishment has ended, thank you all for approving the funds. As all the sand then disappears in the next year, I hope you will be open to adding sand retention and preserving and protecting our beaches and property. Also, once again, April 17th, 2019, you had a budget workshop. In that budget workshop, you approved Measure X funds without any input from the ad hoc committee that you had created for homelessness. As a matter of fact, it only met once. Brought it to your attention before? Should you go through with this and vote for it in June, you really have violated the public trust, and I really think that you're going to be setting a precedent that's going to be very difficult for you going forward, especially asking for any more money from any of the taxpayers. Also, once again, the thing that concerns me is the money that's available, the $28 million in homeless funds that Supervisor Desmond has. Have you yet asked for any of those funds? At the meeting, nobody even spoke up. All you heard was $28 million, and you guys apparently, according to accounts, just kind of plowed right through. So once again, encourage you to do that, please. Again, when will the Planning Commission render their decision about Brother Benno's? For Benno's to operate, the homeless piece of their services, the citizens, all the citizens want that they require accountability, it makes sense. No free stuff, please. It's been six months before the Planning Commission. How much longer? Our unofficial start of summer is marked by Memorial Day. Should Benno's continue to operate with no new requirements, an increased number of transients getting free stuff will also indicate the beginning of summer. And then also, hoping that you'll take into consideration the shopping cart ordinance that we have. At this point in time, they're allowed to run freely, but people have to call the shopping cart service. It really does create kind of a really shoddy look in the city. These end up in our creeks. They're also quite unsanitary, and people are basically violating the law, and it's just because you don't want to enforce the law, and I can understand that. So I would encourage you once again to make a requirement, just like Fraser's Market, that there are locking boots on those carts, and I think that would solve the problem with no problem whatsoever. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Gina Austin, to be followed by Dennis Martinick, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Gina Austin, 3990 Old Town Avenue, San Diego. I'm an attorney that represents a variety of cannabis companies throughout the state, and I'm here to talk about the perceived impropriety of what has gone on in the scoring system with regard to the licenses and applications. As most of you are aware, because you were on the council, there was a last-minute addition to the cultivation ordinance when it was passed last year to cap cultivation licenses at five. What happened was the applications were submitted and the scoring occurred, and we have been unable to get accurate data or any data from the city with our public records requests or any other requests as to how that scoring occurred. We understand, they gave us a total number. We issued a public records request. Any and all documents related to the scoring of these applications, what we got back, more than the timeframe later, was a series of redacted documents of the applications. to get accurate data, or any data, from the city with our public records requests or any other requests as to how that scoring occurred. We understand. They gave us a total number. We issued a public records request. Any and all documents related to the scoring of these applications, what we got back, more than the timeframe later, was a series of redacted documents of the applications, no score sheets whatsoever, no letters issuing the licenses. When we requested of staff to give us the documents that were requested, including the score sheets or anything similar to score sheets, what we were told was no such document exists. We know those documents exist because in letters that I've received from the city, they've told me that they received the score sheets from HDL, the consulting firm. We know these documents exist. In order to avoid potential litigation to force the city to turn over those documents, and for my clients to be able to evaluate whether or not there was, in fact, an impropriety in scoring of these applications, we request that you direct your staff to immediately turn over all the requested documents that have been requested, to stop violating the Public Records Act by refusing to turn over documents. I want to note that, I think it's important to note, the reasons, and I've got a couple of seconds left, the reasons for the questions, not just disgruntled applicants, right? Only five. You've got people who didn't score as high. But from the documents we've received, we know that four of the awards went to Milano family entities, four of the five. The fifth one went to an applicant that has zero experience in the industry and has fraudulent misrepresentations in their application. That information in and of itself is enough for us to say, "There is smoke, there might be fire." And we request that you push your staff to give us the information requested. Thank you.
My name is Dennis Martnik, resident of Oceanside for over 40 years. I'm one of over 250 volunteers with the Brother Benno Foundation. I want to make you aware, I'm also serving as Vice President of our Board in charge of operations. I want you to become aware of an award recently given to the Brother Benno Foundation by the County of San Diego Health and Human Services Agency. This award honors Brother Benno's as a 2019 Live Well San Diego Public Health Champion. Quoting Dr. Wilma Wooten, who is the Director of Public Health Services, the award was given in recognition for extraordinary achievements to ensure San Diego County residents are healthy, safe, and thriving. Most people see Brother Benno's as a soup kitchen, but we are much more than that. Six days a week, we provide hot breakfast for the hungry and hot showers and clothing for those in need. But we also provide food boxes, diapers, and hygiene items for low-income families. We also provide bus passes for those with medical, dental, and social service appointments. We also are involved in housing up to more than 50 men and women who commit to a 26-week recovery program based on Alcoholics Anonymous 12 Steps. This past year, we worked with San Diego County's Health Department, the nursing programs of Cal State San Marcos, Palomar, and Miracosta College, the Vistec Clinic, and our dedicated volunteer, Dr. Terry, to provide health assistance and inoculations for hepatitis A and the flu. This past year, we also helped over 120 individuals step out of homelessness. This was accomplished by partnering with San Diego County Mental Health, the McAllister Institute, San Diego County Veterans Association, the Oceanside Police Department Homeless Outreach Team, and Oceanside's Housing Department. You have excellent caring police officers and an excellent neighborhood services staff. We also helped prevent over 200 families from becoming homeless by helping with emergency rental and utility assistance. This coming year will be challenging with the various illnesses we face, but we will continue to work to keep Oceanside and San Diego County healthy and safe.
To be followed by Kathleen Lippett. You're next, Arlene.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Okay. Well, okay, I wanted to bring up the online position slip for items that are on the agenda for two reasons. It would be very helpful if it would be in a more prominent place on our website, because even when I sent people the page link, the city website page link, they would write back to me, "I couldn't find it." And I think part of the reason is, it's under the heading "Communicating With Council During the Meeting." Well, that would, that's like, no, it's hiding. This is the kind of stuff that can be really easily, quickly repaired and fixed so that we have trust, building trust with the public. This looks like somebody's trying to hide something, a way to be involved. So please, that's one thing. Move that position slip, agenda position slip, to a place that says "Before the Meeting," contacting council before the meeting. And then, in addition, many supporters, supporters, many objectors to North Rivers Farms sent in postcards to weigh their position with you, basically. And there were 75, we counted them, handed out and sent in, and very few of those were received, like about five. So if the public knew about this online digital communication to the council that would be recorded and become part of the public record, I mean, that's just a win-win, instead of trying to send postcards that don't become part of the public record. All right? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathleen Lippett. As a public health practitioner and educator, I would like to respectfully request that the city consider further protections from air pollution. Updating smoke-free policies will help to protect residents from second-hand smoke, which are also a source of air pollutants. In San Diego County, cancer is the leading cause of death at 100 per 1 million people. The county of San Diego's goal is to reduce that rate to between 10 and 25 per million. Marijuana is listed as a carcinogen under Prop 65, with 33 elements found to be carcinogenic, including acetaldehyde, ammonia, benzene, cadmium, chromium, formaldehyde, hydrogen cyanide, isopropane, lead, mercury, nickel, and quinolone. Please include marijuana manufacturing, smoking, and vaping in your efforts to reduce the carcinogens to which Oceanside residents are exposed, not just from industrial sources, but also in parks, beaches, elevators, bus stops, museums, libraries, public theaters, et cetera. I hope that all the policies you may be updating or considering will reflect the importance of reducing the risk of cancer, including carcinogens found in marijuana. California already is producing eight to 12 times more marijuana than the state consumes, fast-making the state of California the drug cartel for the nation. Hopefully, the City of Oceanside will be mindful of the capacity for Oceanside marijuana growers to add to this glut that will unfairly burden neighboring cities that have chosen to prohibit commercial marijuana. City officials should be mindful that the success of a marijuana industry will be on the backs of teens, families, neighborhoods, and communities. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to Item 30. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. Item 30 is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Article 30, Section 3032 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to establish revised affordable housing density bonus regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code Section 65915 and 65915.7.
I move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1 with one abstention.
At this time, we will take a recess until 6 o'clock and come back with our public hearing items.